I call this meeting the Herschel's Bedford Independent School District to order. The record show that a corps of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Good evening to everybody. Tonight, the Board of Trustees is meeting in a called work session board meeting. The Board welcomes and appreciates comments and input from the community. Open forum is provided at each meeting to allow the public to address the Board. There will be two open forums tonight. Open forum number one is to hear requests regarding agenda items only. Open forum number two is to hear requests or make comments regarding non-agenda items and will be heard at the end of the meeting. Those addressing the Board are asked to limit their comments to three minutes per meeting. The speaker should identify his or her name, group affiliation if any, and make a brief presentation with identified solution if one is sought. Remarks should be addressed to the Board as a whole. Oral presentations may not include charges against any employee or board member by name. It is my responsibility to determine if the person addressing the Board has attempted to resolve the concern informally or through the district's complaint policies. If not, the speaker will be directed to follow the appropriate policy. The Board requests that all presentations be made in a courteous, respectful, and professional manner and asks that speakers monitor their own behavior. If you wish to speak during one of the open forums, please fill out one of the cards located on the table in Entry Hall. Dr. Harrington, any comments?
No additional comments at this time.
Any clarifications?
No, sir.
Alright, so at this time, we will recognize our National Merit Commended and College Board Recognition Programs. Dr. Norgard?
Good evening. As the students are making their way around. You know, earlier in the school year, last fall, we had the opportunity to recognize our National Merit Commended and College Board Recognition students, but we had a choir event that was happening at that same time, so we have...
I was just about to say, I recognize some of these kids from the show this weekend.
(laughing).
Thank you so much for coming.
So, we are excited to be able to give them that recognition, even if they were not able to join with their peers that evening. So, I'm gonna let you jump on over there, and I'm gonna have them each join you. Vivian LaSoy. Sophia Barron. Joshua Binkley. Mason Rush. And Alyssa Whitley. While she's getting her picture taken, I'll take just a moment. I know the Board recognizes, but for those in the audience that may not have known what this recognition is for, the bigger group that we recognized in November and adding these students among them, this is based on their PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Exam, their performance. These students are now eligible for a lot of scholarships and great opportunities. This is recognizing their high achievement on that test this fall.
These kids know how to dance, let me tell ya.
Yeah, parents, don't be shy. Go ahead and get in the aisle and take your pictures.
(inaudible).
(laughing).
The Board is always really excited when it gets to see these awards handed out. We understand what a huge accomplishment it is, and the number of opportunities that will be open for these students. I'm sure your mailboxes are filling up with offers and different things that you can look at, and please take a look at 'em all and see you later. And... Congratulations. Alright, we're ready for Board, for open forum number one? No cards? Okay. And at this time, the Board will adjourn into closed session pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The Board will adjourn into closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076.
Good evening. As the students are making their way around. You know, earlier in the school year, last fall, we had the opportunity to recognize our National Merit Commended and College Board Recognition students, but we had a choir event that was happening at that same time, so we have...
I was just about to say, I recognize some of these kids from the show this weekend.
(laughing).
Thank you so much for coming.
So, we are excited to be able to give them that recognition, even if they were not able to join with their peers that evening. So, I'm gonna let you jump on over there, and I'm gonna have them each join you. Vivian LaSoy.
(applause).
Sophia Barron.
(applause).
Joshua Binkley.
(applause).
Mason Rush.
(applause).
And Alyssa Whitley.
(applause).
While she's getting her picture taken, I'll take just a moment. I know the Board recognizes, but for those in the audience that may not have known what this recognition is for, the bigger group that we recognized in November and adding these students among them, this is based on their PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Exam, their performance. These students are now eligible for a lot of scholarships and great opportunities. This is recognizing their high achievement on that test this fall.
(inaudible).
(laughing).
Yeah, parents, don't be shy. Go ahead and get in the aisle and take your pictures. The Board is always really excited when it gets to see these awards handed out. We understand what a huge accomplishment it is, and the number of opportunities that will be open for these students. I'm sure your mailboxes are filling up with offers and different things that you can look at, and please take a look at 'em all and see you later. And...
(laughing).
Congratulations. Alright, we're ready for Board, for open forum number one? No cards?
This process will help us assess the impact of the changes, identify areas for improvement, and ensure we continue making informed decisions that best support our students and our staff. Plan: Planning for the Shift. The plan included setting clear objectives and developing a structured approach. We communicated to all stakeholders and held parent-student information meetings at both Bell and Trinity High Schools. Based on the feedback and questions received, we were able to make some changes and improvements to the plan. Reviewing the 23-24 Plan for the 24-25 School Year was to move the final four sports still at the junior high for freshman athletics to Bell and Trinity School, High School. Cheer also moved to Bell and Trinity. We also had the opportunity to pilot a program to offer dance to freshman students at Bell and Trinity and pilot a program to allow select freshmen to be a part of the marching band. Do: Implementing the Shift. This phase focused on executing the logistics, reallocating personnel and funding, adjusting schedules, and ensuring facilities and resources were in place to support the change. Through the implementation process, we maintain open communication with students, parents, coaches, counselors, staff, to monitor the transition in real time, making the adjustments when necessary. I would like to thank those coaches, those directors, the principals, the counselors, the endless staff members that made this necessary adjustments as needed to make this transition successful. Marching Band and Drill, Audition, forty-nine audition, held auditions, and forty-nine freshmen were selected from the junior high for marching band and drill team to move to the high schools. Athletics moved four-hundred-and-eighteen freshmen from junior high to high school in football, volleyball, basketball, girls soccer, and cheer. Study: This is the evaluating the impact. We have begun gathering feedback to evaluate the effectiveness of the transition with VPA and athletics administering a survey to students and parents to assess program impact and identify areas of improvement. This is the results of the VPA survey. I'd like to start with two verbatims. The most positive aspect of the program was getting to be part of something bigger than me. The program has changed my child's attitude towards school, music, and life in general. Hard work and sacrifice. He is invested in band like nothing else I've ever seen. General Experience: With fifty-six percent responding, the overall experience and level of support and communication, this strong positive response highlights the effectiveness of the program. While there is still room for improvement, the majority of the students feel well-supported as they transition into the program. Logistics: Scheduling balance, the logistic issues of transporting these forty-nine students to the high schools. The majority of feedback is either satisfied or neutral, which is an excellent starting point for continuous improvement, allowing us to make those refinements that benefit all participants. And many of you experienced the twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five marching band competitions. So balance was definitely something those students had to work with, with being on the marching band and schoolwork. Participation Impact: Impacted confidence and leadership skills, developed strong friendships or connections with peers, foster a sense of belonging, overall enjoyment and interest in the program. The program, as you can see, has significantly impacted on, made an impact on student confidence, their leadership and teamwork while fostering strong friendships and a sense of belonging, which is what we want. Participants find the program highly enjoyable and engaging, making it a valuable part of their high school experience. Athletics Survey Results: Starting with their verbatims. It helped me build my confidence and grow as a student athlete. Being a part of cheerleading as a ninth grader allowed my daughter the opportunity to learn material, expectations, and traditions sooner, and that will serve her well as she continues to cheer in tenth grade and up. Same Questions Act: Overall Experience. The program received generally positive responses, with most participants satisfied with the overall experience. Areas for improvement include enhancing communication and addressing concerns to increase overall satisfaction. Logistics: Transitioning four-hundred-and-eighteen students from five junior highs to two high schools presented unforeseen logistical challenges that we couldn't see until we were already in the program. But again, that effective communication with directors, counselors, coaches, principals, and transportation, thank you for those extra buses that you provided us for next school year. It was essential in making real-time adjustments to best support our students. We anticipate an increase in satisfaction as we apply the insights gained from this experience to future experiences for our students. The Impact: The program, again, has positively influenced their participants by helping them develop confidence, leadership skills again, and stronger friendships. And many students feel a greater sense of belonging, there's that word again, belonging, within school, and the program has contributed to their overall enjoyment and interest in athletics and cheer. ACT: Taking that survey, taking that input, and refining and improving. We are pleased with the positive feedback from the first year of implementation, highlighting strong satisfaction in leadership development, peer connections, and overall enjoyment in the program. Moving forward, we build, we will build on these strengths while refining logistics, communication, and support structures to further enhance the experience for all of our students. Our Plan Going Forward for the 25-26 School Year: Athletics, Freshmen's Athletics, and Cheer will remain at the high school. Drill Team Freshmen Students will continue to audition for varsity with a study exploring program expansion. Freshmen Students in Marching Band and Guard will have the opportunity to audition for the marching band with the potential for up to a twenty-five percent increase in numbers. No longer the pilot, this will be the ninth-grade select marching band. Before I open it up for questions, I would like to leave you with one more quote from our survey. "We may never fully recognize the impact this has had on our young musician, but every smile, every laugh, every tear shed has been well worth the band family relationships that were built." Thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me in the surveys, did, have you done any survey with the coaches and the directors?
We have not. So at the end of the year of the experience, we will have a survey for them as well to get that impact. We will also talk to the principals as well.
Okay, and counselors probably. How can we do that maybe better? Or if there's anything that needs to be improved?
Absolutely.
Are all of the suggestions, I mean, I'm assuming that in the survey, there were things that people could write, so you all have...
Correct. We're, we just conducted, yes, we're sifting through it.
All of that.
But anything that we can do to improve the experience? You know, Mr. Fielder shared with me that this was the most participation that we've had in freshman athletics.
That's awesome. That's great. That's great. Thank you so much. I know that...
So the phrase down at the bottom, ninth-grade select marching band, is that just a designation for the kids who are in it? Or we're not actually starting a ninth-grade select marching band?
Not yet. That's the varsity marching band. So they will be attending varsity marching band.
I know this was a Herculean effort this first year to really fundamentally change the way we were doing this. But these numbers are really high for a first year, especially when you consider the numbers of students that we...
That participated.
Moved their cheese. This is, this is really, really encouraging and really exciting. And a lot of work that all of you put in, and thank you for all of your efforts. And, and the coaches, I can't wait to hear what they have to say. I'd love to also hear a snippet of things from teachers that aren't coaches, if they have anything to share with us about, you know, sort of how this affected the students and their classes and that kind of thing. It'd be really interesting to hear. Some of them may say it had no bearing, but if it did, I'd love to know what that is.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you for your...
I've got a question.
Okay, yes.
When, when did the surveys go out?
The VPA surveys went out in November, is that correct, Ms.? Okay. And the athletic surveys went out in December.
Did those go out to students and parents, just ninth graders?
Yes, those students that participated in both programs. So it went to parents, it went to families that participated in the program.
Okay. Could one, could one family submit more than one survey? Could a parent and a...
A parent and a student, yes.
Give a survey response?
They could have.
Okay. Do those quotes in your presentation come from comments directly from the survey?
Directly from the survey.
A lot of times when we do our district-wide surveys, they'll compile all of the comments for us to take a look at. After you have sifted through them, will you do the same for us?
I'd be happy to, sure.
And then this is, this is really the second part of a, of a presentation that came to us last January. So, you know, as we're continuing to go through this, my request would be that we continue to get a January update because I think there's another, at least another year or two to continue soliciting this feedback. And I echo expanding the survey to the coaches and the administrators and the folks who are on the ground, just to make sure that we're getting this right.
Okay, absolutely.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I won't sit down.
Yeah, you're next.
I would like to introduce, as Ms. Ty brings up the next slide, presentation, Ms. Sonya Stanton, who will be presenting information on our new Navy Junior ROTC program.
Good evening. So I am super excited to announce that HEB ISD has been approved by the United States Navy to start our first-ever Naval National Defense Cadet Corps in August 2025. Yay! This process has been a long time coming, and we're going to go through that here in just a second. But first, I want to show that the program aligns with the HEB Strategic Plan under Priority Student Success, Quality Indicator Number Four, and Goal Number Four, that all students will have the opportunity to take the ASVAB and/or participate in the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. So, we're going to start at the bottom on this. So this has really been a ten-year journey for Dr. Harrington. So in 2015, he was asked by Mr. Menden Hall and Mr. Stokic from Bell High School to join the Red River Recruiting District Advisory Assistance Council. And really, that, we call that the RDAC. And so he joined the RDAC to form a relationship with the Navy in the area. And so in May 2023, I joined the RDAC Committee, and I relayed HEB's intentions to start the JROTC program in HEB, and I enlisted their help. I let them know that we were going to need their help to make this possible. In July of 2023, I spoke with the cities, the mayors in all three cities, and asked them to write a letter of recommendation, kind of talking about the partnership between the cities and the school district. I also talked to some of the admirals at the RDAC Committee and asked them to write a letter of recommendation for us to get a program about the relationship between the school district and the Navy. And I will tell you, at the RDAC Committee's meetings that I have been to since May 2023, HEB ISD is the only school district represented in the RDAC Committee. So our partnership and relationship with the Navy is really strong. So I had two mayors get their letter in, and then I had an admiral get his letter in. And so I mailed our application in July of 2023. And it was supposed to be three-month turnaround for us to find out how, that we were going to get a program. Well, so then here comes fall 2023, and HEB had two students get the ROTC scholarships. Those scholarships were worth $200,000 apiece, and those were because of the relationship that we have with the Navy. The commander of the Red River Recruiting District, Commander Dorsey, the commanders in those districts have the opportunity to just give the scholarships. The student has to fill out the application, they have to meet the qualifications, but it is at his discretion that he has so many that he can just award. They don't have to fulfill the whole thing. And because of the relationship with the district and the Navy, and because he lives in this school district and his students go to this school district, he wanted to make sure that we had students get those scholarships. So we had two students get those scholarships in the fall of 2023. In February 2024, Commander Dorsey left the Red River Recruiting District. And so they asked if they could use the Pat May Center for the Change of Command, and we were like, sure you can. And so I went to the Change of Command, and I actually got to meet Rear Admiral Mattingly, who is the person in charge of JROTC and ROTC in the United States. He is, he is the man in charge. And so I spoke with him, I let him know, hey, you know, we turned in an application in July, and they said it was going to be about a three-month process. We haven't heard anything, and we'd really like to get a program started, you know. And I talked to him about the relationship that we have with the RDAC Committee, and he says, I'll get back with you. That was on a Friday afternoon, my phone was ringing Monday afternoon with somebody from his office. And so, I mean, it really happened that. And then so in June, we got our letter that said we were accepted to have our first squadron start in August 2025. So that was some, some really exciting news. So what is NNDCC and NJROTC? So the Naval National Defense Cadet Corps is what we have to start. And what that means is the district pays for the program, okay? And so in August 2025, the district's going to pay for the program. Once we maintain one hundred cadets for two consecutive school years, we will be awarded a full Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. And so our goal is to move us to that by the fall of 2027. So giving us two years to have our two years of a hundred cadets or more to move to that. And here in just a second, Master Chief Renconis is going to tell you how we're doing in getting those hundred. And we're doing really well. So he's going to tell you about that in a second. So that's how we move from a district-paid program, the NNDCC, to a JROTC. For the community, we're going to be a JROTC program. It's the same thing, it's just the funding. And so if we say NNDCC, nobody knows what that is. But if we say JROTC, everybody knows what that is. So we will be called a JROTC in the public, in our publications. So we want to clear, clear up some misconceptions about what JROTC is. It's a, it's a leadership program. It is not a recruiting tool. Actually, more than ninety percent of the cadets go on to pursue higher education, and roughly ten percent join the military. We are having a Navy program. That does not mean if they want to join the military, they have to join the Navy. They can join any branch that they choose, okay? It's just a, it's the Navy curriculum that we're going to be using in our program. The program is for all academic levels. It provides valuable opportunities for professional growth, leadership development, and teamwork, and it benefits all students, all academic levels. And it's a character development and leadership program. It's not a boot camp. Physical fitness is part of the curriculum, it's an important part of the curriculum, and it's a standard that they're judged on. But it's not as intense as, say, boot camp. But those are some misconceptions that we want to get out there. So who can join JROTC? Right now, it's open to all eighth-through-eleventh grade students in the district. We're going to combine to form one HEB squadron. Our goal is to have, like, majority ninth and tenth graders so that those students can stay in the program and we can keep our program and get that one hundred students. If there's space available after the ninth and tenth graders are in there, we will take the juniors and seniors as well for that program. So the location of the program is going to be at the Buenger. Ninth-grade cadets will be bused over either for first period or for fifth period at the end of the day from the junior highs. Thank you for the two extra buses that made that possible. The tenth, yes.
It's only two buses, y'all.
Hey, we only have two classes, so we're good. Yes. Two buses make a big difference.
There are seventy-seven passengers.
There we go, there we go. There we go. There we go. The the high school cadets will ride the Buenger buses that go over to the Buenger during the school day. And then fifth-period cadets, this comes from my junior high heart because we got to worry about the freshmen. At the end of the day, they're going to ride the buses back to the high schools. And so if they are bus-eligible, they will then ride their route bus home from the high school. So they will still be able to get home if they're bus-eligible students. So I'm excited to announce and to introduce to you Master Chief Alex Rinconis. He is going to walk you through what the curriculum looks like. He's going to walk you through what he's been doing so far to recruit students. And then he's going to kind of talk to you about some events that we would like to see our JROTC cadets involved in once we get the program going. But I also want to mention that we wouldn't have Master Chief Rinconis if we didn't have that Navy relationship already with the RDAC. Believe it or not, we stole him from the Red River Recruiting District. He is, he was part of that before he retired. And there are many districts across the state of Texas. I think we counted before we came here. There's like 15 looking for Navy science instructors. And so we were lucky to to find one that wanted to do it. And we, he's got them lined up, ready to go when he builds his program where we need to add people. So without further ado, Master Rinconis. Master Chief Rinconis, sorry.
Well, good evening, everybody. As you know, I introduced myself real quick. Again, Alex Rinconis, Command Master Chief, retired in the Navy. I just retired in November of 2024 after 33 years of naval service. So thank you, thank you very much. Most recent position was the Center for, most recent was Red River Recruiting District. I was served there for the last three years. Again, maintain those great relationships with the school district, and I'm glad that I'm here today. One of the tours I did have coming up in my in my career, career-defining, was the Center for Naval Leadership. It was a job where I was a facilitator slash instructor. I was able to teach other sailors about leadership and interact with all all services, all communities within the naval community. And that inspired me today. Inspired me to get my bachelor's degree because I love that classroom setting, and this is why I'm here today. So I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to be here and and do this JROTC program with you all. So thank you again. Any questions? Nope, okay. All right, my spring schedule. Visit each junior high campus every week during, to recruit students, answer questions, and and get to know the future cadets. Again, I I can't say this enough, every principal, vice principal, school counselor, and all their staff have been super supportive in helping build this program. At this point now, we have 70-plus students that have signed up or inquired about this already. And that's just at the junior high level. I haven't even started the high schools yet. So we are making progress quickly within the last couple of weeks. So we're we're doing good. We're also, I'm also visiting with local JRC programs in the area. I work closely with all the local programs and had the privilege to be a a judge at a JRC competition in Joshua High School. So I'm I'm taking notes. I'm taking notes. And in February 14th, they're having a 2025 Area 19 NROTC Championship will be at the JRB base. I'm also going to be a judge there. So taking all these notes, and we're going to make sure our program is just as successful. And at the same time, we're also raising funds and securing grants. As you might have known, we, $15,000 was already raised, and we already spent $5,100 on the color guard equipment. So the plan is, this is again another exciting part of this, is get that equipment in, identify four to six future cadets, and get them trained up this year. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that before the school year ends, we're already participating in HEB ISD functions and outside in the local community. So and I had a couple of students already said, I'll do it. Just tell me where and where to be there. So that's good. We're making progress. Any questions about that? No, thank you. All right, my 25-26 schedule, as you can see, first period is going to start at 8:05 to 8:55, freshman cadets from all five junior highs. Second period, 10:15 to 11:00, sophomore and senior cadets. Fourth period would be 1:35 to 2:25. They'll be the sophomore and senior cadets again. And then fifth period will be 2:55 to 3:43, freshmen, senior cadets. Our priority is going to be freshmen, but if we have room, we'll take in juniors and seniors if we can. Again, as you can see, we started 8:05. We're starting a little bit earlier. That's that's the lineup with the junior high time to make sure we also get them back in time for their second-period classes. A day-to-day for for me as an ROTC instructor, I'm going to break the week into Alpha and Bravo. What that means is Monday, Monday on Alpha Week, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays will be in the classroom. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're going to be doing PT and drill. A part of our curriculum is drilling, rifles, marching, standing at attention, saluting. We're going to get them all trained up for that. Bravo Week, we're going to do the switch. Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays will be PT and drill. And then we'll be in the classrooms Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now, if everything goes as planned with the uniforms, we're still working the details. But on Wednesday is going to be uniform days. So on Wednesday, you should be seeing our cadets walking around in uniform, standing tall and looking proud. So. Now, a couple of examples. So we we wanted you to see of the of a schedule. Sample freshman, sample freshman schedule number one, as as you can see, the ones that are coming from the junior highs. Again, 8:05 to 8:55. Note, first period starts at 8:05. Buses will run from the junior highs, starting at 07:20, to the BCTA. So that class ends at 8:55. Their second period doesn't start until 9:20, so they'll be bused back before the second period begins. And then they'll be on their home campus for the rest of the day. Now, for the end, end-of-day, seventh period, again, in ROTC, students will, they'll be on their home campus all day until the final period, and then they'll be on the bus, they'll ride the school to the, to us at the ROTC, and then they'll they'll ride the buses from the high school to home if they're eligible. So they won't have to go back to the junior highs. They'll ride the buses back from the high school. Another sample example for number three, second period, NROTC. They were with me in the second period. They start off on their home campus. Students will ride the bus to the BCTA from the high school. Again, 10:15 to 11. Their third period doesn't start until 11:26. So it gives them enough time to get to their 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 school, their home campus and finish off their day. A final example, 1:35 to 2:25. Again, the morning classes are on their home campus. Students will ride the bus to the BCTA from the high schools. They'll get on the bus. They're done with me at 2:25, in time for the fifth period, 2:47, back on their home campus. Any questions about the schedule?
I do have a question about the freshman schedule. If you could go back. So this may be more for Ms. Stanton or someone else. But are they getting, are they getting back in time to participate in VPA and and athletics?
So that is why we put JROTC first period and seventh period at the junior highs because athletics is seventh period for the freshmen. So if they're in first period JROTC, they could do the the first period. If they're in band first period, they could do seventh period JROTC.
Great, thank you.
And we try to make schedules that look like different students, you know, your advanced schedule and then your on-level schedule. And so, you know, that showing that it really is going to fit all student schedules.
Sonya, while you're up there, I have a question. You have to maintain 100 kids for two years, correct?
Yes, sir.
What's the maximum you can take?
That's a question for Master Chief. Ms. Harvey said that the classrooms over at the Buenger have 28 seats, so 28 seats times times four is what we can take right now.
And one drops out, then you won't have the 100.
Well, we're lucky because the certification date is not until October, so that gives us room. Because, you know, some kids are going to get it, and they're going to be like, ah, this is not really what I signed up for. And then some kids are going to be like, oh, I wish I would have signed up for that. So that gives them time to to move those numbers around.
But if we add, if we make it to the full JROTC, then we add another instructor, and so then we're going to be able to take on more. Also, we'll be moving, you know, within three years, hopefully moving into the final facility, which will be the remodel of the pre-existing Bell Manor. And so, you know, I think we have some leeway once we, once we get fully, fully funded from the Navy.
So also in terms of schedule, we may be getting to this, but since this is one squadron, right, all four classes are one group, are there other activities that they do after school or other times where they're-
Yes, sir. And that, and Master Chief's going to talk about that, about the, there is some after-school or before-school. He's going to kind of let them talk about it. We know some students, athletics is going to be their priority, or band's going to be their priority, or or something's going to be their priority, but they want to be in JROTC. And that's fine. They they just won't be able to participate in the competition drill and and things like that. So the class is an important aspect of it, and those class periods are an important aspect of it. But if they want to participate in the competitions and stuff like that, they will have to come after school. And the ones that are going to be on the honor guard and stuff like that, they'll have practices before or after school, whichever works best for the students.
And just on that question, sir, the competitions I've been to, some of these programs got 200-plus cadets, but they only bring 25 to 50 because they are participating in other programs, football. These are the students are strictly ROTC. So. All right, our NROTC curriculum. NNDCC curriculum focuses on leadership, citizenship, maritime heritage, physical fitness, and naval operation. I just wanted to make sure, you know, we understand the standard will be set right from the, from day one, and before you can lead, you must learn how to follow. And expectations will be clear, how they, how they carry themselves in and out of the classroom matters. We want them to be the tip of the spear. We want them to be the standard here at HEB. So that that's our goal. Classroom instruction is supplemented by community service projects, competitions, physical training, and field trips to area military bases. There's a bunch of, there's a lot of naval history here in Texas that people don't know about, naval museums. You have the Lexington down in Corpus Christi. You have the Admiral Nimitz Museum down in Fredericksburg. There's a lot of areas that eventually we want to take these cadets to, to teach them this history that they don't know about. Cadets accepted for enlistment who provide evidence of two to three years in the program are entitled to advanced promotion upon initial signup. So basically what that means, if if we have a cadet that does two years and they decide that you want to join the military, they're, they'll go in as an E2. If they do a three-year in the program, they go in as an E3. They're basically making more money going in than an average person joining the military. They're up for advancement faster. So they could easily be an E4, in the Navy's term, petty officer within a year of of joining the military if they, if they do the ROTC program. So this is an advantage for them if they want to join. Events for cadets. Raise and lower the flags on their home campus. That's going to be huge for us to see them do that. Present the flags, pledge activities at some district sporting events, presenting colors at football games. I can't wait to see that. School board meetings and major district events. Volunteer events throughout the community. We'll be working with the local community where we can put our color guard out there, put the face, put them out there so they can, they can be seen. Participate in Veterans Day breakfasts, field trips to the area bases, and and obviously the NROTC competitions. We want them to be part of that. There might be a possibility for certification. I'm still looking in for the details, but if we're able to compete sooner than later, we might be able to to certify quicker if 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 we do well in these competitions. So we're crossing, we're going to be training, we're going to be trained hard. Before I get in, get into the questions, I'd just like to say again, everywhere I've gone, I've met retired or former Army, Navy, Air Force, and all have have come up and and wanted to volunteer and help out. And as I say, again, I appreciate everybody. This is definitely going to be a team effort, a group effort. We're going to need trusted agents out there because we can't be everywhere, especially we're spreading out our our cadets. And and again, just the appreciation I have for the HEB ISD is is is, I don't even have the words for it. I just want to say thank you for all the support, and we're excited about this program and where it's going. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions? So on, on the transition, the two-year transition from the the Navy program to the JROTC, we have to have 100 students. Is that 100 enrolled students total? Or do they have to be the same 100 students for for two years?
100 total, sir.
Okay, so we could have some turnover after our first year, but still be at the 100 threshold? Okay. So other than meeting that threshold, that 100 threshold for two years, what are other boxes we have to check in order to make the transition?
Well, we have to get the cadets trained because we will get inspected. Our area manager will come out and take a look at our program and making sure we're we're teaching within the the textbooks and we're we're practicing our drilling. Because that's a big part of it. This is the drilling and and, you know, part of the program. So I really don't see obstacles, but we're, we are going to have to make sure we maintain within the curriculum and do the things that we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you for doing what you're doing. I think we're all really excited about this. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for being willing to be a part of it. Sonya, thank you for everything you've done. Joe, thank you for 10 years of of doing this. Very exciting for us. Thank you.
I just thought about something. Have you all reached out to the American Legion in Bedford for assistance?
Not yet, but I did meet them at the Veterans Day lunch, and they said to call them.
Yes, because Joseph would love to be involved.
We did reach out to them prior to Master Chief coming on board for maybe some funds for uniforms. But they send students, some of our students to Austin for boys' state and girls' state. And so that's, they wanted to keep their money going there. So, yeah. But yeah, we did reach out to them, and they are willing to help us.
Okay, that was going to be my next question about the fundraising and the grants, and who's paying for those uniforms? So is that money paying for the uniforms for the for the 200 kids? Or do we need to raise funds for uniforms on top of that?
So we got the $10,000 from Dr. Faebeloo last year, so we had that money. And then we got a $5,000 grant from Texas Trust. And then we have a grant application with Bell right now, Bell Helicopter. And we reached out to them, and she says she can't give us any details yet. She can't announce anything yet with a smiley face. So take that as you want. But so hopefully the grant money will help us pay for those those uniforms. You know, we wanted to get the flag corps stuff, the presentation stuff, so we can go ahead and get that going before we get kids in uniforms too and get them excited with that. So we spent that. But pretty much the rest of that 15,000 is going to go towards military tops and and covers for the students.
We're hitting thrift stores. We're hitting, we're calling everybody. We use uniforms. We can, we can make them work, so.
Yes, because that's the uniform that they'll have, the one that you see up there. So we can get by with them wearing their own black pants, but we're going to have to get the the khaki tops and the covers for them.
Yep. The one thing I did want to mention, just, you know, 10 years ago, it was Menden Hall and Stokic, like, you got to come to this meeting. And I'm like, you know, I'm like, what? And so they they drug me to this meeting, and and it just clicked. And I'm like, this is, this is good. And even prior to helping us get the the JRC place, you know, when when they would have the Nimitz STEM truck, you know, they would schedule us and then schedule everyone else. And when they would do the trips to the bases, so you can see what what these the the recruits are getting to do. It was just an amazing thing to visit the bases. Well, our people have gotten opportunities.
I would just put the picture back up there. So I got to land on the Nimitz aircraft carrier. It was out in the middle of the ocean. So, yeah, that was a very, it was a quick stop. But no, that's, that's a group of us, different people from across the state that went on this trip. And we're standing on the flight deck of the Nimitz, and those jets behind us, they were just taking off and going the whole time we were standing there. So that was part of the things that we got to do to to be a part of that.
And I remember one of our meetings, we're in the RDAC meeting, there's two admirals in the room and another one on the phone. And like, you know, Sonya and I are like, are we supposed to be here, you know?
We are the only school district there, and it is quite, it's an honor that we're there and get to help them make decisions about recruiting and and get to hear what they need and help make those decisions and know what kind of students we need to be reaching out to and to help the the Navy fill their numbers. And if it's not the Navy for the students, then at least we have that information to to give to them. So.
Sonya, thank you for your passion because we all know that there's great programs, but it's really the people that make the program. So I appreciate your passion for this, and I'm real excited that we're getting to do this.
I'm I'm super excited. I can't wait till we have that first group step out on the field. Maybe convocation. That's what we just talked about. Get them at convocation. Any other questions?
Any more questions? Yeah, just thank you again from the board. We're all very excited about the program getting started. I know it's been something that- getting started, I know it's been a uh something that Dr. Joe's been passionate about, I mean, I've heard about it a lot of times, about different ARDAK meetings and stuff that he's gone to over the last ten years, so, so we're we're excited, and we we can't wait to see these kids in in uniform, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, seven point zero three, bilingual and ESL annual program evaluation, Ms. Butler.
Good evening, this is the bilingual ESL annual program evaluation for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four, I'm Henry Butler, the coordinator, and the information in this uh presentation is aligned to the strategic plan, the priority of student success, quality indicator three, which is meeting federal and state accountability. These are the contents I will be reviewing in this presentation, I'll go into detail for each one of them. Here's a list of terms I will be using, uh, one of the terms I wanted to point out is SIFI, those are students with interrupted formal education, for one reason or another, some other students that are coming in, they may have not received any education in their home country, or it was interrupted, where they might have uh attended one year or two years, um, and so that's just one of the new terms that um I wanted to point out.
Just when you think you've learned all the acronyms.
I know, right? We're going to get you some more. Um, so I wanted to start out with uh explaining the difference between bilingual and ESL programs, so they both have the same goal, and that is to attain full proficiency in English, so that our students can participate equitably in school, the difference becomes an instruction, in bilingual education, we're able to use our native language, Spanish, we have two different program models, late exit and dual language, um, our students do not begin to exit until fourth grade, and our teachers are certified as bilingual teachers. The ESL instruction, we, it's all in English, um, our students begin to exit in first grade, the minimum required is for the ELA or reading teacher to have their ESL certification, then we have a couple of different delivery models. Looking at the demographics data, you'll see the increase in emerging bilinguals, in twenty sixteen, we had a little bit over thirty-one hundred students, in twenty twenty-four, we were at fifty-six, over fifty-six hundred students. Here's the race ethnicity report, and a couple of trends that are showing up, the white population has been decreasing, it continues to decrease, and the two populations that have uh continued to increase are the Asian and the Hispanic populations. Any questions on that? All right, I'll move over to move on to the academic progress of our emerging bilinguals. Here is the STAR ESL elementary performance at the approaches level, uh, we did see a decrease, um, it is mirroring what the general population, um, as well, what the the STAR scores that we saw for the general population. Here are the STAR ESL secondary performance at approaches. EOC ESL performance at approaches, we also saw a decrease, biology, we we were able to see a decrease of two percentage points. And then here is our STAR bilingual Spanish performance at the meets level. Uh, one thing to remember, as I mentioned earlier, our students start to exit in fourth grade in the bilingual program, that means that they transition over to English, they're starting to take their tests in English, and so these numbers here that you see in uh fourth and fifth grade, those are the students who have not attained full proficiency in English, therefore they are still testing in Spanish. And you'll see that the number of students who tested in fourth and fifth grade in twenty twenty-three, when you compare that to the twenty twenty-four scores, or the, I'm sorry, to the twenty twenty-four numbers, you'll see that we did uh see some increases, and uh we did see the SIFI students coming in, um, students who have not received, you know, education in their home country, some of them had one or two years of uh education, some, a lot of them lack the foundational skills, and so, and and another, uh, something else to consider is that these numbers are so small, that just one or two students will affect the percentage points as well. Our twenty twenty-four RDA report, I'm happy to report that we received all zeros and ones, which that is the goal, uh, EOC passing rates did increase for biology and history. Any questions on that part? All right, moving over to the English proficiency among emergent bilinguals, so TEA measures their English proficiency through the TELPOS test, and this TELPOS is administered to all K through twelve EB students, it does meet the ESA federal requirements, it assesses the English language proficiency standards, and it assesses four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and then each domain contributes to twenty-five percent of the composite score. For those students who are participating in special education, they're emergent bilinguals and have a significant cognitive disability, we have the TELPOS alternate test available, it is for grades second through twelve, those students who take the STAR alt also take the TELPOS alt, and these students are holistically rated using observable behaviors. For the regular TELPOS for grades, for students in grades K and one, the classroom teacher holistically rates their listening, speaking, reading, and writing, this is based on classroom observations and student interactions, and then for each one of those four domains, they are giving a proficiency level of beginning, intermediate, advanced, or advanced high, and the results show us how well the students are using English in academic settings. For grades two through twelve, they are tested online, all four domains are online, listening and speaking are bundled together, reading and writ- writing are bundled together, each one of those four domains, once again, is given a proficiency level of beginning, intermediate, advanced, or advanced high, um, the results indicate how well the students are using English in an academic setting, and then for the last two years, in twenty-three and twenty-four, TEA has um rated our students, where in the past, the teachers were would holistically rate their writing, TEA is now um rating them. And so here you see our scores for TELPOS, and so this is a percentage of students who are reaching advanced high, uh, we didn't see a lot of fluctuation here, some increases in Kinder, fifth and sixth grade, uh, Kinder and first, they are holistically rated by the teacher, second through sixth grade, uh, TEA is uh scoring them, and um also our numbers have gone up in in EB students. Here are the TELPOS results for secondary, we saw some um increases um in the upper grade levels. Any questions on the assessment scores? All right, and now we'll talk about accountability, so emergent bilinguals are, uh, they get the English language proficiency, and this is, it includes the TELPOS and TELPOS alt results for K through twelve, it compares how students did last year, sorry, the prior year to the current year, and making sure that they're making progress. The expectation is for students to move up a proficiency level, or at least uh score advanced high or basic fluency on TELPOS alt, and it must be in the two of the four domains from one year, um, from the prior year to the current year. Accountability, our EB students in their first year in US schools, they are excluded from accountability measures, um, unschool asylees and refugees are exempt from taking the STAR in their first year if they are in grades three through eight. EB students in their second year of enrollment are included in their accountability measures, um, students who are parental denials, meaning that their parents denied services, they are included in the same manner as non-EB students, and student, uh, start, I'm sorry, STAR alternate assessments and results are also included, um, regardless of the number of years in US schools. Any questions on accountability? All right, now we'll talk about kids who exit the program, so when they exit the program, also known as reclassification, because we are reclassifying their code, remember, ESL kids can start exiting in first grade, bilingual students can start exiting in fourth grade due to our late exit transitional model, and then once they exit, we monitor them for four years. So what does it mean to exit? Well, the students have um demonstrated that they have English proficiency, so they are um proficient in English, and the re- the way that they demonstrate this success is they meet standards on STAR reading language arts, they or they score above a fortieth percentile on a norm reference test, they have to score advanced high on the composite score on TELPOS, and then they have a teacher evaluation stating that they are ready to exit the program. And I'm happy to report that last year, we were able to exit seven hundred and forty-eight emergent bilingual students, that was fourteen percent of the EB population, so this is important, because when you look at our exit numbers for twenty twenty-three, we exited a hundred and thirty-six total students, and then seven hundred and forty-eight in twenty twenty-four. And this is, uh, you know, our students work really hard, our teachers work really hard, so kudos to all of them who who made this possible. Any questions on the exits? All right, bilingual exceptions and ESL waivers, so the law says when you have twenty or more EB students that speak the same language in the same grade level, we must offer bilingual education in grades K through fifth grade, or sixth grade if it's clustered in the elementary levels, you'll see here our top four languages, Spanish, Arabic, French, and Nepali, we currently do have a bilingual program for Spanish, but we do not have one for Arabic, French, or Nepali, therefore, um, I did file for eighty bilingual exceptions on those languages, and then thirty-four ESL waivers for teachers who did not have their ESL certification, and I work closely with HR to make sure that we communicate the the expectations to the teachers, we also provide full day training for our teachers, and then we also reimburse them for the cost to get their certification and to add it to their certificate. So, now the comprehension development plan, so how do we support our bilingual teachers? Uh, we have instructional planning meetings that take place every six weeks, during these meetings with the teachers, we talk about curriculum, we train on best practices, second language acquisition, um, the bilingual campuses always also have language acquisition coaches on the campus, they're there to plan, coach, model, provide feedback to the teachers, uh, our bilingual instructional coaches and facilitators at the campus, I'm sorry, at the district level, also help support our teachers, we, they help to uh train or support the non-certified teachers, they write dual language curriculum, they embed linguistic supports, they also provide after-school training, such as the barriers and bridges, which is open to any pre-K through twelve teacher, and during these trainings, we really talk about those barriers that could be keeping our EBs from learning, and give the teachers um training on how to overcome those barriers. For ESL teachers, the same thing, they are um more than welcome to attend all the barriers and bridges that we have during the year, nineteen out of the twenty-one elementary campuses have language acquisition coaches to help them, and then one secondary campus also has a language acquisition coach, um, we embed linguistic supports into the curriculum, as I mentioned before, we provide certification support to our teachers to make sure that they they have the support to go past the assessment, um, I provide PD for the ESL teachers in LAX to ensure that they have the tools when they are helping the classroom teachers, and then, as I mentioned, reimbursement for certification costs. All of these efforts are um to meet the effective linguistic and cognitive needs of our emergent bilinguals. And then additional support, we were able to uh add three full-time teaching units, one teacher at Harwood Junior High, one at Bell, and one full-time LPAC specialist, so thank you to the board for those additional units. Um, I'm also in the process of purchasing online um TEAC-based instruction for our third through fifth grade bilingual classrooms, and then our secondary ESL um also just received new ESL curriculum, it really focuses on building the academic language, and it's cross-curricular, so it brings in that science and social studies, and it also meets the foundational skills that our kids need. Any questions?
Any questions on this report?
The drop in the scores, does that pair up with the Tapper situation and what we were talking about with?
Yeah, we also had a drop in the general ed population as well.
Right, so it's because of the expectations from the state.
That and their language, um, you know, like I said, we're we're getting SIFI students, so it's just all the different factors.
You know, there's a lot of factors with the, you know, those numbers, because it's a small group, but they, the reality also was, we saw the new STAR two years ago, and then all of, and and we saw the performance, and then we saw last year, and we saw dip across the entire state, and so, um, you know, when we look at our performance, we're our relative performance and comparative, we felt very strong, but like I said, we've seen a lot of red, because we we did see that movement, but it was a- across the state, and it's just a very odd, it was an odd year to see that dip in year two of the implementation, we anticipated that in year one, not in year two of the new test, so.
One thing I just wanted to add, and we see the same thing in special education, as we get more, as we become, you know, more and more of a destination district for all the things that we offer, we continue to be forced in the situations where they're coming to us with varying backgrounds, and we have to be ready to turn around and serve them, and they test, and it's a very short turnaround in order to produce the level that we've produced in the past, because we've we've had um people within our system that have been there longer.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
As we transition, I I, let me just add this piece though, because Doby was looking at numbers again, we're continuing to add students, remember the demographic said that we're going to lose them, they keep coming, and it is, I, it is the destination district, we, people are targeting us, and we are growing in an in a time where the data says we should not be, we were supposed to be losing students the last two years, and we continue to add students, and then added a bunch again.
I agree, and it starts with a free K. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to spotlight pre-K this evening, the presentation Together is Better aligns with quality indicator two and goal one. We're going to take a look back to prior to two thousand and two, HEB provided half-day pre-K for any eligible students based on the following qualifications, educational disadvantage, emerging bilingual, foster care, military if the family, uh, the parents were um active in the military, families exp- experiencing homelessness, or a family who have received the Star of Texas Award. So knowing that we offered half-day pre-K, in two thousand and two, the inception of core knowledge began, okay, we called it CK pre-K, because we also taught core knowledge program, uh, to core knowledge curriculum within the program, um, it offered our families a full-day pre-K option, and back in two thousand and two, we were one of the only districts who offered something like this, um, and so our surrounding districts came um and followed us shortly after that, and we're offering that full-day option for a small tuition fee. CK pre-K and state-based pre-K programs initially operated with distinct structures, uh, different enrichment opportunities in different cultures, which kind of created two different pre-K programs within our district. So fast forward to two thousand and nineteen, when House Bill Three was passed, it mandated two things for the department, it mandated full-day pre-K and the high-quality components, we were already high-quality pre-K, um, but we actually have to, we have a checklist now to remain in high-quality status. So the full-day um implementation, they gave us four years to roll that out, so within the four years, we had to plan and roll out our classrooms, we were at, we were sitting around twenty-four classrooms at that point in time, we needed to roll those out um to full day. I'm proud to say, even with COVID, um, within that implement- implementation period, we were able to plan, roll it out successfully, staying in that timeline, and continue to expand expand our program capacity at that point in time. The first high-quality component I'm going to speak to is our curriculum, House Bill Three actually facilitated a greater alignment between our core knowledge curriculum and our state-based curriculum, as well as the program. Um, our curriculum standards were strengthened across both programs, because within those four years, we also went under curriculum adoption in twenty-one, and then in twenty-two, we had new guidelines that came out the year after the adoption, um, so we had a busy four years, but with that curriculum adoption, we were able to adopt one pre-K program, which is Frog Street, for all students, um, in our full-day program. So that led us to rename Core Knowledge Pre-K to Tuition-Based Pre-K, and so last year was the first year that we changed that name. Together is Better, I kind of went down memory lane a little bit, and thinking, uh, this has been, I've been in the department for thirteen years, as either a state-based teacher, a tuition-based teacher, a facilitator, now the coordinator, this has been our motto for as long as I've been in the department, and it still stands true today, Together is Better by offering one unified program for all of our students, by being able to integrate our tuition-based and our state-based students together in the same classrooms on designated campuses. This approach, we know, will create a richer, more inclusive learning environment, and support a balance and a well-rounded education experience for all of our students here in HEB. So we're going to look at enrollment, I don't need any buses, um, we've talked a lot about buses, um, so, we just, we just, yeah, we don't have any more buses, and I need more than two, uh, but I do probably have some future JROTC kids in this program, so, um, when we look- back at the last several years, full-day pre-K, I believe, has significantly shown us the need for full-day pre-K. Our enrollment growth from twenty-one to twenty-two went from six hundred and ninety-three to today, we're sitting at a thousand and twelve students. So pre-K is officially in the thousand club with the rest of the grade levels. That was a big goal of mine, and we have met it and exceeded it this year. So that is a forty percent increase since 2021. If we look at state-based enrollment, it has consistently increased, leading to, we have added nine classrooms in the past three years, one of those being a bilingual classroom, and we are, we're full in the new classrooms that we've added. If we look at tuition-based enrollment, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we were sitting at eighty-seven students. We felt the need in twenty-two to twenty-three to increase our classrooms, so we added two additional classrooms in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then we added one in twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're maintaining those numbers. We did start full this year. We have lost a couple of families due to different circumstances, but our capacity and our seat allocation for tuition-based will remain unchanged for next year. So we will continue to serve the same amount of students. What we would like to do is on the following campuses that have a state-based and a tuition-based program on their campus, such as Bedford Heights, Meadow Creek, Spring Garden, Trinity Lakes, and Veridian, instead of having the state-based classroom and the tuition-based classroom, we would like to just have pre-K classrooms. So we will merge those students just on those specific campuses next year, just to, to have pre-K classrooms. Okay? We will continue to have two different registration processes this year, just because our tuition-based seats will need to remain in a lottery base because we're only allocating so many seats for tuition-based. So we will have a tuition-based parent information meeting next Monday at Pat May, and then our registration process will start after pre-K kickoff on April seventh, and we will hold that on every single campus. Any questions?
How many applications were there last year that you, it was a hundred and forty-five?
We have a hundred and fifty-four seats for tuition-based. I can tell you that we had over two hundred applicants, and we have two campuses with a waitlist. However, the campuses that have open seats this year, we have exhausted their waitlist. So the waitlist is just for specific campuses.
Are they able to enter, like, you said you had some, there was some loss of, you know, students. So are you able to enter at any point in time? So like in the middle of the year, you can call those folks up and say, hey?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and they continue to call us and ask if there's availability. But our open seats this year are on campuses that the students that are waitlisted, we have offered them to go to those campuses, and for varying reasons, they choose to stay on the waitlist for that campus.
Okay, any questions?
So if we, excuse me, if we have a hundred and fifty-four seats for tuition-based, what is our cap, or what is our capacity for state-based?
State-based, total, we're sitting at a hundred and fifty-six. We're looking, we've got about twenty-eight open seats right now. So are you doing the math on that? I see. What is that?
Well, I'm trying to figure out. So if we've got two, four, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen classrooms, and we have a hundred and fifty-four seats for tuition-based, what, how many seats do we have available for state-based?
Right, on, so like Bedford Heights would have twenty-two additional state-based, Meadow Creek would have twenty-two state-based, so they would have, we would just, we have twenty-two in state-based, twenty-two, or twenty-three, I'm sorry, in state-based, and then twenty-two in tuition-based.
So if we had, we can't turn away state-based?
Right.
So if we exceed our state-based, do they then become, do they bleed over into our tuition-based seats?
We could, but right now, what happens on those campuses is that we can place them on a surrounding, on a neighboring campus that has availability if needed. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does, except we do have a cap, though. I mean, can, do we have capacity to exceed these classrooms that we currently have?
We are monitoring that, and I know that this is the closest we've ever gotten to filling, especially with opening twelve total units in the last four years. So we are continuing to monitor that. And another thing that really works in our favor is we have moved pre-K registration to April. So that allows us to, last year was the biggest number of families that we were able to register. I think we were at six hundred and fifty families that went through the registration process in April. We were able to language test them and LPAC them. So that allows us to have some numbers for projections. So I do think that we need to continue to monitor these numbers. Henry and I know we, we talk about numbers, and we're also looking at the dashboard constantly to see how many students we have pending. We had ten registered just since January twenty-first. So the students are still, they're still coming to our district.
Have we identified the campuses that have open classrooms?
Yes.
That would be our sixth school?
Yes, we do, and we'll have to look at room and who has room for additional classrooms.
Is there any thinking, as we're looking at additional campuses, for relieving some of the pressure on as many classrooms on these campuses and dispersing it out into others? Because pre-Kers take a lot of attention.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And, you know, four classes of pre-K, even three classes, that's a lot of kids.
It is, and on some campuses, we have eighty pre-K students. So that's what I was thinking. Sonia's program, when she gets the cadets trained, then they can come help us for the first six weeks. No, just kidding. No, but Darla, do you want to?
These five that are listed are only the ones that have both programs, right? So there's, there's a lot more schools that have pre-K than these five?
Yes, we have pre-K on every campus, some form of pre-K. We have our monolingual, we have our bilingual, and we also have our blended pre-K. But for campuses like Chris was speaking to, Wilshire and Arbor Creek and Spring Garden, those are the campuses that we have four pre-K units. So some of those campuses have eighty pre-K students on that campus. Darla, do you want to talk about capacity?
Just one thing I wanted to add, Mr. Brown, to your question, is that, it was a great question. Are we identifying the schools that have room? And it's a coordination of efforts because also we, we have special education programs that need to expand. And so I've been visiting with Renee, visiting with Joey, and figuring out, okay, if we need to put a pre-K here, or we need to put a FOSI here, what can we do? So it's, it's a little bit of a chess game. And so you may be thinking, I don't know if you're thinking this, but I'll just say, if you're thinking, well, why don't we just do this on every campus and combine the kids on every campus, and everybody can go to their home campus for pre-K? That would be great, but we have to have room. And so we have to make sure we can serve all of our state-based students that qualify by all those qualification measures that Joey outlined for us, and we're not ready to do that and just open that up because we need to see if this number keeps growing as it is, and it's hard to know with pre-K until they come. It's like, we don't know how many are coming. It does help that we set registration in April so we can get a better idea, but still many of our families don't come until the summer to register. So we're trying to get ahead of it and project as well as we can, but with this number increasing like it has been, we need to watch and make sure that we have enough capacity on our campuses.
Well, and I thought last year was interesting. Joey,
I didn't mean to do that.
Joey was very concerned about numbers, and so we pre-ordered curriculum and materials, and was, we were already gathering furniture so that we were ready, yeah, we were ready to open, and I think you ended up needing to open both of those because of the continued growth. So the other piece that is going to alleviate some of this is as we continue to rebuild these schools, with the increased capacity, it's going to give us the space we need across more campuses and across more of the district. So as we get those, because we do, right now it is, where do we have a room and can we do it? But it is, like, how many do we have? What do we, you know, is it time for another room? And where, where are the seats? So this is, I'm excited about it because I think it's kind of what Darla, and it's what the vision could be at some point. Can we be across the entire district and, and get more kids in their home campus?
And Chris, that's been a goal of mine, to feed registration kind of through the office. So after, so that I place every student on their home campus, and if I can't place them on their home campus, I put them at a neighboring campus so that we don't have a pre-K student who lives in Hurst going to a Ula school. So as families register, each registrar calls our office, and we place them so that we try to keep everybody within, especially for our families, without transportation and siblings together and things like that. So, any more questions?
No question. I just want to make a, a observation here. What great work you all have done with this program and making our pre-K HEB program be one that other people are looking at. But it's important that we remember, if we go back to slide four, that in 2019, there was a mandate from the state that we moved from part-time to full-time, which we've done, and we've done really, really well. But let's not forget that the state is still only funding this at a half-day, not a full day. So we're doing these amazing things with half the amount of funds we should be getting for these youngest, sweetest, cutest of all of our students. And so we're fighting really hard at the state level to advocate for additional funding for this, but we need the community to help us in those efforts as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your support of the pre-K department and our littlest learners.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for review of regular board meeting items. Mr. Williams, financial statements for the month of December 2024.
Okay, we're going to look at the financial statements for the month ending December 31st, 2024. Not near as complicated as pre-K. Could be much simpler. We don't need any buses. So, let's start off with the general fund. The general fund had a fund balance of, at the end of December, two oh, two hundred and nine million, five fifty-two, two seventy-two. That represented revenues over expenditures in the amount of thirty-one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Investment interest for, for the year as of that reporting period was at half a million dollars. Total expenditures as of the end of December were at thirty-three point one three percent, so well within our, what we use to measure it, at fourth, uh, four months into our fiscal year. So that fund is performing as we expect it to. Our general fund expenditure matrix payroll was at sixty-one million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars for the period, which is eighty-three percent. Utilities were at one million, five forty, four seventy-two. That was at two point one percent of total expenditures. Instructional supplies were at one million, two thirty-seven, two twenty-six, or one point seven percent. And then other expenditures were at three million, one twenty-three sixty-four, or four point two percent. And as I say every month, most of that is our property insurance premiums. Child Nutrition Fund Services, their fund balance is sitting at seven million, one forty, five eighty-four. That represents revenues over expenditures of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. They tend to do, continue to do well. They, they were struggling a little bit today. They had a lot of people out sick, so Mariela told me she had to go run a cashier, be cashier today. So they get by, they make it work. Expenditures as of 1231 were at thirty point three seven percent of budget, so they're well under our measuring stick also. So that fund continues to perform as we expect it to. Debt Service Fund, we have a fund balance of fifty-three million, four seventy-nine, seven oh-two. That represents revenues over expenditures in the amount of twenty-nine million, two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. We will be making our first debt service payment for the year here coming up in the amount of eighteen million, three thirty-eight, five twenty-five on February fifteenth. Our second final payment for the year will be in August, middle of August, for forty-three million, one oh-four, four hundred, for a total debt service of sixty-two million, oh thirty-three, eight hundred. Of note is the investment interest for the funds in that fund of four hundred and twenty-two thousand so far for this period. Tuition-Based Pre-K Fund, that fund balance is four hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and twenty. That represents revenues over expenditures in the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, two seventy. Revenue received for the current period is sitting at forty-eight point eight one percent of budgeted, and, and the expenditures as of 1231 were at thirty-four point three four percent of budget. So under our measuring stick once again. That performance, fund is performing well. Special Revenue Funds, of course, these are all our Title Ones, all those funds. Their total expenditures as of 1231 were at twenty-seven point four three percent. The expenditures do exceed the revenues due to the lag in TEA reimbursements, which we have diligently submitted as much as we could, especially in light of what's been in the news lately about halting federal, some of the federal grant programs. But anyway, those funds are tracking and doing as well as they can, doing, doing as they're supposed to. Campus Activity Fund, fund balance of three million, seven ninety-two, three fifty-nine. That represents revenues over expenditures in the amount of four twenty-nine, nine thirty. Revenues were at a million, three eighty-nine, seven nineties, or while the expenditures were at nine fifty-nine, eight fifty-nine for this period. So they're taking in a little more than they're spending this last period. That fund is operating well within its parameters also. The 2024 Bond Fund, fund balance of five hundred and sixty-three million, five hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five. That represents expenditures over revenues in the amount of nine million, three eighty-eight, nine nineteen. As I say every month, only revenues we have coming into this fund are our investment revenues at this point. That interest for the year as of this period was at six million dollars. Again, we will be looking at that next issue, which won't be until mid-2026, and that next issue will be in the amount, the remaining funds of three hundred and ninety-seven point three million. But we don't need that just yet. But that's fixing to change here in the very near future. We're going to start spending those funds really quick. The Locally Defined Capital Projects Fund, fund balance of twenty-eight million, three fifty-four, six twenty-eight. That represents revenues over expenditures of a hundred and twenty-five, three thirty-six, which normally it's the other way around, but we're taking in more interest revenue than we are putting out in this, in this fund at this time. Of course, this is continuing to fund many different projects that the board has approved, and, and we will continue to bring items to the board as we see necessary for this fund. Any questions about any of that?
Any questions on the financial statements? All right, so let's look at budget transfers and amendment requests.
Okay, Taj doesn't have it up there yet, but. Our transfers, our inner, uh, our function, between functions, our, we had one small one for five hundred thousand for a leadership conference for an art teacher to attend, and then we had one from five hundred, not five thousand, five hundred, five hundred, five hundred, excuse me. We had one small one for forty-three thousand, four hundred dollars for data, transfer to data processing. However, we do have a quite large amendment we are asking the board to approve for seven point, a little over seven point one million dollars. As we, was brought forward last month, our, in our audit, we did have an increase in fund balance of seven point one million dollars, and we're asking the board for, to allow us to And we're asking the board for, for, to allow us to transfer that into our locally defined fund. And what I might want to mention is that we started the year off last year with a 12 million dollar deficit. And through frugal, being frugal, interest earnings, increased student counts, all the things that help us out, we flipped that around to a 7 million dollar increase in fund balance, so.
And Dobie, that's without touching the transition grant funding?
Yes, that is, not, yeah, using no transition grant funding out of there, so.
That's very exciting news. So thanks for, thanks for keeping an eye on that for us, Dobie. Any questions on this transfers? All right, 8.03, college entrance exam. College entrance examination board for advanced placement examination fees. Mr. Kerbo.
Good evening, Mr. Romero, Dr. Harrington and board members. These are routine expenditures here for the next several items here until we get to two down. They want to talk more about that. This is for our AP placement test for our AP students. It's an estimate amount based on our historical usage from last year. Who's currently enrolled and scheduled to take test plus? Those who will be eligible for doing that after the March 14th testing. And so this is a good number.
All right, any questions on the AP exam fees?
Brandon, we, do we still take a pre-test to get that paid for? At one time you had to pass a test before you took the AP test. Is that still being done?
We do not, we no longer use the APPT. Our study document is not discerning.
So you just pay for every kid no matter what?
They're still in the class at the time of the test.
Okay.
All right, 8.04, renewal of content keeper web filter.
Part of our participation in the E-Rate program requires us to have child internet protection. Act, or under the Child Internet Protection Act requires us to have a web filter that protects our students from objectionable material, things that are defined within the act itself. So this is a, an annual filter, our cost for the filter that we've maintained for a number of years. And this is a renewal of our existing agreement.
So this is the same vendor that we're with currently?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
The same product. May not be the same vendor, but it's the same product.
Okay. So it was quite a bit lower than the other two bids. So I was, I just wanted to make sure that we're getting the same thing that we have here. All right, any questions on this renewal? 8.05, purchase of child nutrition services department vehicles.
Student nutrition department is in need of a vehicle to transport our frozen foods to and from campuses for throughout the year and so forth. And the old truck has just gone or reached its final year of, or life existing. So we need to buy a new vehicle. We've took bids from cooperative, vendors from cooperatives. And we put out a set of specifications and you see the responses there in the agenda item. The, the low bid didn't meet our specifications on a number of fronts. We submitted the, the set of specs. They offered this as an alternate. We didn't see that as a viable solution. So we're recommending the second, the second ranked vendor from Rush Trucks here in Irving.
All right, any questions on this truck purchase?
I'm sorry, we're Peoria Ford.
What's that?
We worked with this on a number of occasions. So the, depending on what they had offered, we finally got it nailed down to what it was we were getting and, and what we, what we were offering. So the one from Peoria Ford.
Who pays to get it here from Peoria?
We do, and that's included in the.
Is that included in that cost?
In that contract, yeah. The last time we bought a vehicle from Peoria Ford was in November of 2023. So a couple of us offered to go out there and take in a Ranger game, get the vehicle and bring it back ourselves. But the, they didn't accept that.
All right, any other questions on the purchase of this vehicle? 8.06, purchase of international backglow I B examinations.
Again, this is our standard annual cost for I B examinations for students that are enrolled in that program. This is what our anticipated costs are for this year.
All right, any questions on the purchase of the I B examinations? 8.07, purchase of maintenance and operations department vehicle.
Maintenance is in need of another vehicle that we had a one vehicle that has reached its end of life as well. So this is part of our replenishing of our rolling stock. And so we put out, it's, uh, the reason we're bringing this to you is we consider purchases that are in the aggregate of the same category, such as the child nutrition vehicle. This one, even though they're two separate purchases, they're still aggregated. So we wanted to bring this to you and make you aware of it and, and our approval. Our recommendation is to purchase from Silsby Ford as noted.
All right, any questions on this vehicle purchase? Thank you, Mr. Kerbo. We're ready for action items. Item 9.01, consider approval of donations for the February regular board meeting presentation of certificates of appreciation.
I move the board approve the February 2025 donations as presented.
Any discussion? Please vote. And that motion passes. 9.02, consider approval of order of election for May, May 3rd, 2025.
Okay, it is that time when we, we do need to have a board election, this May 3rd coming up for places two, three, four and five. So we are asking the board to take that action, to approve that, that election.
All right, are there any questions on this action? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve to call an election of May 3rd, 2025 to fill places two, three, four and five of the Board of Trustees for Hurst Hills Bedford Independent School District. The board approves continuing joint elections with political subdivisions located entities or partial, entirely or partially inside boundaries of Tarrant County, and authorize the administration to negotiate a contract with Tarrant County Election Administration to conduct the May 3rd, 2025 election as presented.
Second.
I have a motion of second for the board to approve to call an election on May 3rd, 2025 to fill places two, three, four and five of the Board of Trustees for the Hurst, Ula, Bedford Independent School District. The board approves continuing joint elections with political subdivisions located entirely or partially inside the boundaries of Tarrant County, and authorizes the administration to negotiate a contract with Tarrant County Elections Administration to conduct the May 3rd, 2025 election as presented. Please vote.
And that motion passes. 9.03, consider approval of amended construction contracts for construction projects. Mr. Kerbo.
We, at our December board meeting, the contract was terminated for the construction of the Hurst Hills Wilshire and Midway Park, or any of Bell Manor Elementary Schools. And that's widely known here and detailed. So this, uh, we went through a process to continue selecting a contractor for this and narrowed it down to, narrowed it down. We went back to the original ones who were part of that selection process, gave everybody the opportunity to, uh, offer a proposal based on that. And, and the one we've come up with is recommending this, that Joris General Contractors be assigned these projects. You amend their current contract for the construction of Midway Park, and these would be added to that.
All right, are there any questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve amending the existing contract with Joris General Contractors, Inc. to add the construction of replacement campuses for Hurst Hills, Wilshire and Bell Manor Elementary Schools, and authorize the superintendent or his designee to execute a contract on behalf of H B I S D as presented.
I have a motion of second for the board to approve amending the existing contract with Joris General Contractors, Incorporated to add the construction of replacement campuses of Hurst Hills, Wilshire and Bell Manor Elementary Schools, and authorizes the superintendent or his designee to execute a contract on behalf of H E B I S D as presented. Please vote.
And that motion passes. Consider approval of Medicaid billing and reporting services agreement.
In December, we also brought to you an agreement to continue receiving Medicaid billing and claiming services through Houston I S D. That was to complete, continue services with them until we had the opportunity to work out a solution with the recommended vendor, which is onward learning. We've completed that negotiation and have that agreement here for you. So we will transition once we get everybody trained with, to terminate our existing agreement and transition to onward learning under this action.
Any questions on this agreement? I'll accept a motion.
Move the board approve the agreement with onward learning for Medicaid billing and claiming services as presented.
Second.
I have a motion of second for the board to approve the agreement with onward learning for Medicaid billing and claiming services as presented. Please vote.
And that motion passes. 9.05, consider approval of modifications to superintendent's contract. Nothing to add? All right, I will accept a motion.
I move the board approve the superintendent's contract as submitted. Second.
I have a motion of second for the board to approve the superintendent's contract as submitted. Please vote. And that motion passes. We're ready for open forum number two. I have one card. Are there any others? All right, so we have one card. Speaker is Kyle Cowart. Sir, if you'll just come up here to the microphone and they'll put a timer up there for you. You'll have three minutes.
Give me just a minute. A little bit nervous because this is my first time speaking at the, at any district meeting, eh? And I'm a little bit nervous, but, uh, I've no, I'm a student at Trinity High School. And above all else, what I value the most for a campus is for people to feel safe. Unfortunately, that is not something that many students have had the opportunity to feel at Trinity High School and LD Bell and Birdville and even in junior highs. So I'll give you an example. Last year, when I was a junior, my still current girlfriend and I were walking through the outdoor area at the campus. Public area completely open, should be considered safe. Wouldn't you agree? Well, a group of almost eight or nine students walked up and essentially threatened to sexually abuse my girlfriend, force me to watch, and would essentially not take no for an answer. So I got us out of the situation and immediately went to the administration. The administration identified the students who had made the threats, told us that things would be handled and refused to see us anymore for that subject. I saw those same students walking around campus for the entire year before they finally graduated. So my concern is more on the fact that these things are documented on school cameras. These thing, and I've spoken to dozens of other students who have reported similar things, from drug deals going on during class time, to physical assaults, to vehicular manslaughter attempts in the parking lot. All recorded and no action being taken. My concern with being a student is not for my safety, but for the safety of my fellow students, because I'm almost out of here. I have one trimester left. But there are freshmen, sophomores, juniors that have multiple years left at this campus. And if they can't feel safe, if I don't feel safe, if the most wonderful person in my life does not feel safe and dozens of other students don't feel safe, how can we encourage our people to take care of each other when they cannot take care of themselves? So I would encourage the school board to maybe take a step back and look at the administration, find out why there, nothing is happening to these students that are recorded doing these things, why no action is being, is being taken and what we can do to fix it. Thank you. Do I sit down or are there questions?
Yeah, we can ask questions on, on open agenda, but we, we appreciate you coming and, uh, we know it takes a lot of bravery because we don't see many students here, so, so thanks for coming and sharing with us. All right, we are down to other business. So item 11.01, opportunity for board members to request items to be placed on future board agendas. Anybody have anything?
I do.
Okay.
I would like to know sometime in a future meeting that we might discuss what's going to be the plan for our high school libraries. I mean, I know that we have only one librarian. Actually, we have no librarians at the current moment, I think. But we only have one between our two high schools. Libraries today are used totally differently than they were used back in the day. And I'm interested to know what we're doing about providing resources for our students to do research, particularly our advanced placement students. I know that currently, I believe, we take some of our I B students to U T A for them to do research. I just kind of would like to know what is in the plans. We haven't really talked about libraries. We've talked about athletic facilities, everything else. But I haven't really heard much about libraries. And I'm kind of interested to know what our future plan is for the libraries in our district and on our school campuses. Junior high also.
All right, so specifically a report on how libraries will be used in the new campuses in the future.
Do we have any plans to update resources so that students have more resources that they can access on our campus? And what is our plan about librarians, full-time librarians at our campuses? I know high school and junior high, I mean, do we ever plan to address that possibly again?
All right, do we have a second? All right, so I'll get with Dr. Harrington. We'll make sure that we'll get that scheduled. All right, I'm looking at the board activity chart. We don't have anybody marked down for the PTA Founder's Day luncheon. Is there anyone planning? Okay, okay. So we'll have that covered. I think that's the only thing in.
Just to add to that, hopefully you can go, traditionally I go to that, but I will be at a TAD conference on that day.
All right. Okay, 11.03, consider approval of Tasbe Connect and Ignite Conference 2025. This is a conference for Mr. Campos. Do you have anything you wanted to add?
Only thing to add to it is obviously we're in the season of good avocation. And I think this board does a great job of advocacy. It's a good opportunity to meet with our fellow trustees here in Texas to share notes and, so, it's a one-day conference.
All right, it had a cost of $125 if anybody was curious. I'll accept a motion.
I move the board send Fred Campos to the Tasbe Connect and Ignite Conference 2025 in Austin. Second.
I have a motion of second for the board to send Fred Campos to the Tasbe Connect and Ignite Conference 2025 in Austin, Texas. Please vote.
Please vote.
And that motion passes. All right, we don't need a second closed session, is that correct? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We adjourn.